Oh my, oh my.
Everyone's good evening. Happy Wednesday to you and to yearns. Ewens. What you, how, how were you raised? How do you say y'all? Do you say use guys? Use guys? You guys, y'all, ewen, ewens, use. Hmm, urins. Yeah. Young, youngins. What's, what's that ever you said? Welcome to Spirit and True Sanctuary. We're glad you're here tonight. We are once again in Carlton Demetrius Pearson's The Gospel of Inclusion. I believe a postmodern reformation of the church and of evangelical thought. Isn't it rewarding and reassuring to know that Bishop Carlton Pearson, child prodigy, started preaching at fourteen, was preaching at the National Kojic or Church of God in Christ Conventions, um, convocations as a teenager? Became a star in the, in the Kojic world very early. And then kind of morphed into kind of a Pentecostal charismatic flavor. Got exposed to some white evangelicalism. And began to, and then continued to evolve into inclusive theology. We're gonna talk tonight about mysticism and mystics. I want to tell you that this right here is a postmodern mystic. Seeing God from a framework that is not easily defined. Uh, the ability to just say, I am that I am and that maybe you're not supposed to know the divine name. How about that? That's that's who this man was and is. I, I miss him dearly. I could cry thinking about it. Um, welcome uh, to the Gospel of Inclusion. We're glad you're in the house tonight. We're gonna begin tonight with our, with our devotion. I don't know what you're doing here. Why are you here? What you doing? Who you, who you doing it with? Why you doing it? Where are you? Yeah. Where are you Adam in thought? Uh, are you deconstructing? Are you reconstructing more carefully and cognizantly of who trying to avoid the pitfalls of concrete thinking, jumping out of the frying pan into the fire? Yes, I've deconstructed Christianity and now the greatest thing going is new thought, ancient wisdom. Oh, and then that fails me. Then the greatest thing is going to be self-help. Then self-help, I don't like that anymore. Now I'm going to become, I'm gonna go to Baha'i for a while, or maybe I'll be a Taoist or just get somewhere, sit down and get still. Be still and know that I am God. In your reconstruction, be very, very cautious, vigilant about creating new frameworks. The only methodology that you need during your deconstruction is three words. I don't know. When you approach the spirit of God with those three words, uh, it, it kind of opens up a field uh, that is different than arguments of right and wrong accuracy. Uh, of scriptural interpretation. And you just surrender to the spirit moving in through around and as you. And that means you begin to recognize and, and justify truth wherever you find it. You begin to, to say things like namaste or namaskar in the African spirituality that that which is holy Christ anointed divine in me is recognizing that in others. And so in that, in that space, uh, as you're deconstructing, deconstructing your religious ideologies, let's be vigilant not to recreate something that's just as dangerous. You don't have to, you don't have to get kicked by a horse twice to learn what the first kick came to teach. Teach us. Alright, we are gonna grab our devotion on tonight. Fully Weight Three Sixty Five. It is November the fifth. We are in the month of gratitude. Are you giving in gratitude? Are you living in gratitude? Hmm, it's a good space to be in. Alright, this is part one. It's called the courage, challenge, charge and choice to live authentically. And of course, that is reminiscent of the, the alliterations of Carlton Pearson. Y'all remember how he would string words together? And, and he was guilty of alliteration so much. I, I pick up a little bit of that from him. Alright, uh, let's grab our affirmation uh, tonight together. Tonight or today, I will awaken the courage, accept the challenge, receive the charge and make the choice to be my true authentic self. No matter how many people it upsets. Uh, have you seen the stand-up? I don't remember the, the name of the stand-up. Uh, Chris, the comedian Chris Rock did a stand-up uh, some years ago that I think was the most viewed or the, or the best attended comedic stand-up in history. And it may have been surpassed since then. Uh, but Chris Rock in, in a piece of his bit, he was talking about when you go on a date, you know, sometimes people wanna say, well, who, who is this? I wanna know who you really are. Who is this person in front of me? Be authentic with me. And he says, no one is authentic on the first date. You're meeting their representative. They're not gonna tell you their credit score, how many people they have, uh, hmm, known in the biblical sense. Uh, you're gonna wear makeup, eyelashes, weave, Spanx. Men might do something to make themselves look more appropriate. And so no one really meets an authentic person on a first date. But our lives, our lives are not replete with just first dates. You get, first of all, you get to wake up with yourself every day. Um, and that means Barack Obama said this in his autobiography. He said, the, the longer that I am involved in public service, the more I realize I am only accountable to the person that I see in the mirror. Hmm, isn't that powerful? Yeah. And so Barack Hussein, Obama began to realize, yes, I'm accountable to a party, to a nation, to a coalition, a cohort in some ways. But really, in a sense, in the sense of conscience, I'm only accountable to the person that I see in the mirror. If I've had to shake certain hands and say certain things and play certain roles to get things accomplished, am I okay with it? Have I, have I in the, in the greater good, have I sold my soul? Or have I just been in the process of doing some bridge work, uh, as we talk about in, in um, inclusive architecture? What is, what is your authentic self? And how long have you been living it? And did you live a portion of your life that was not your authentic self? And what did that feel like? It, it feels good to be part of a group, doesn't it? Feels good to be accepted and embraced. So many people think like we think. If you're here tonight, we, I'm not saying we all think alike, but we all are curious at least. We're inquisitive. So many people that I've encountered in more traditional um, liturgical or ecclesial spaces think like we think. But they're not willing to, to transition their friend group. They're not willing to give up some, some, some family relationships that might be threatened when they transition into their authentic selves. And so I don't know how many lives we get. Do we get many lives? Do, do we believe in reincarnation? There seems to be at least some teaching uh, in the Gospels about reincarnative, at least maybe not transmigration, but the migration of spirit or reincarnative spiritual awarenesses. Um, but how? Let's just say we don't get another life. Do you really wanna live this life as an imposter? You wanna live as someone that you are not? And what does that mean about your relationships? The person that you are not is attracting people who like your arnotness. They're attracted to your, to your false representative. And so you, do we really wanna live an entire sixty, eighty, a hundred years with people that only like our fake selves? I just can't, I can't reconcile that in my journey. And so whoever my friends are or are not, I'm okay with that. And there's been some pain along the way. We lose things. But the pain is just really a small price to pay for living your authentic life and for also gathering authentic relationships to yourself. The other part of that is, um, if you look down, let's see, uh, at the second sentence, it says, is there any nuance between selling out and being all things to all people? Let's, let's hold those ideas together tonight. What does that mean? Selling out to just be accepted or maybe intentionally entering into certain conversations to do some bridge work? And so maybe in our public callings, we do some bridge work because we are inclusive architects and we want to allow a conversation to breathe a little bit. We don't wanna start with a non-starter. So we don't wanna start with a bunch of, with, you know, Ephesians one, First Corinthians fifteen, Galatians three. We wanna kinda get Romans, Romans three. We wanna give it some, some chance. Romans chapter five. So what does that mean? We don't start grand, in, in a granular conversation of scriptural accuracy. We start by just saying, where are you? Is the God that you were raised with, is that God failing you in some ways, or at least maybe troubling you in other ways? And if you are, let, let me come on this bridge with you. Let me, let me come out of my inclusive esoteric enlightened space and take a few steps across this bridge and see if I can architect inclusion, watch this, without giving up my authentic self. Ooh, can you hold that intention right there? I can still be my authentic self and navigate or facilitate or curate a conversation with someone who is just embarking on their deconstruction. Why? Because I remember where I was. I remember the things that I thought that I would be ashamed of saying that I thought or believed those things at one time. And so there is some nuance in the devotion today is that your authentic self is also, it also has the capacity to live primarily in your authentic space, but also to navigate conversations with those who aren't where you are, but they might need your voice. They might need to resonate, or they might need a sounding board, or maybe just a safe space to talk some things out. Isn't that what Jesus did with Nicodemus, with the rich young ruler, with the young lawyer? Yeah, he, he navigated architecture, architecturally navigated conversations with people who weren't exactly maybe where he was, but he was willing to say, let's, let's find a common entry point and talk on that, on that space. Alright people, we are all called in some ways to, uh, to bridge. Look at the quote or the italics down. It says authenticity, authenticity is the daily practice of letting go of who we think we were supposed to be and embracing who we are. I wanna have an authentic life, authentic friends, but I wanna be flexible enough to do some good bridge work uh, as an inclusive architect for those who may not have our vernacular. They may not understand our nomenclature or our language, our jargon. Why? Because it's, it's not, it's foreign to them. And guess what? When we began deconstructing, it was foreign to us too. So we remember, as um, Isaiah chapter fifty-one would remind us, we remember the pit from which we were digged, from which we were dug. Welcome once again to Spirit and True Sanctuary. We are in Carlton Pearson's The Gospel of Inclusion, a postmodern, I believe, uh, ninety-five theses, if you will. He nailed these to the door of our hearts and asked us to reconsider and to even reclaim the bigness uh, of God. Alright, uh, tonight we're gonna talk about uh, this, this, our subject is God is a mystical experience. I think we're in week eighty-five. I think I'm right about that. And let's grab our uh, discussion prompts uh, for this evening. Number one.
Listen, I'm so sorry about having some graphics issues. It seems to be frozen. So if we don't have the graphics, the, the questions are in your chat tonight.
Okay. Everybody hear that? Okay? Having a few technical issues. And so uh, check your chat if you'd like, uh, just as, as a backup to the props tonight. Excuse me. Alright, discussion prompt number one. Do our subjective, subjective experiential, cultural ideas which all of us have. If you say you don't have them, you've got more than most. All of us have subjective. What does that mean? We're not completely in a neutral space or a space of objectivity. We all govern our lives through experience. Experiential things kind of inform what we think about God, ourselves, society around us. And then cultural or provincial experiences and ideas. Okay, so do our subjective experiential, experiential, cultural ideas of what good and what we think civilization are, do they determine our definitions of God? So the way that, the way that we bring our filters to constructs like good and civilization, do those inform or even, even determine our definitions of God, how we see the world around us? Number two, are some people closer to God than others? Hmm. The Islamic Sufi, I don't know the, I don't remember the name right now, said God is closer to you than your very neck vein. The thing that sustains life, that, that artery. Yeah. In him we live, move and have our being. The kingdom of God is within you. Yeah. Are some people closer to God than others? How would we unpack that? Number three, are rigidity and certainty obstacles to being born again? Is being born again a confession? Is it a belief? Is it a catechism, a doctrine? Is it something you say out loud and then you're born again? Or is being born again a process of letting go of rigidity and certainty? Think on these things. Is being born again a process of becoming more flexible? More willing to see the, the allegory, uh, the uh, the early church, the first and greatest of the early church fathers, Origin uh, is remembered and sometimes even remembered as a heretic because he dared to say that we should read the Bible as an allegory. Out, the allegorical translations of scripture is what Origin in his study found that you can't read the Bible literally. There's no way because there are too many counter testimonies, too many opposing or antithetical statements that we find both in, in similar authors or the same authors and in disparate authors. And so Origin said, the only way that we can really respect this book as sacred or as having a sense of authority is if we read it in some sense of allegory. And of course, the, the literal minds were very upset that Origin would uh, would suggest any sense of an allegorical reading of the sacred text. Our rigidity and certainty. I just finished reading a book uh, by Dr. Pete Enns. He is a scholar and theologian uh, at uh, Eastern uh, seminary in university. And he wrote a book called The Sin of Certainty, the first class. The very first class that I took in uh, in my, in my seminary work at Emory University was a teaching on uncertainty. And they, they, it really what it was is they were trying to provide the evangelical minds with a safety in it. They were saying, look, you're about to be exposed to some shift. You're about to be exposed to the academic study of, of the Bible. And if you come in here rigid and, and inflexible and with a concrete mind, you're gonna get destroyed. Because you're gonna find out some things from a historical critical perspective that are gonna mess you up. And so the entire, my entire first day of seminary, I think I was probably forty-eight-ish years old, something like that, was a teaching about like tonight. You better be flexible or you're gonna be broken. Because you're about to learn some things about the scripture and the history of the Bible that might jack you up, shouting. Alright, uh, this is week eighty-five. God is a mystical experience. I wanna give to you just, just real quickly, not long. Uh, just a couple of mystics uh, in what we call the Abrahamic religions. That is Judaism, Christianity and Islam. We would perceive that those religions are very rigid, uh, very concrete or literalistic. However, in those three Abrahamic religions, we find a current uh, for, for millennia of mystical thinkers who challenged what some of the interpretations of their religion and their sacred texts were. In Christianity, we find mystics like Meister Eckhart. So the, the author and guru Eckhart Tolle, The Power of Now, A New Earth, Stillness Speaks, um, all of those incredible books that have radically changed some of our lives. Eckhart Tolle was named for the Christian mystic Meister Eckhart. Meister Eckhart is the one who says, let God be God as you. This kind of embodying of the, of the divine nature. Uh, Saint Thomas Merton uh, gives to us a lot of mystical thinking. Saint John of the Cross, Father Beatty, uh, Beat or Beatty Griffiths. Amazing, amazingly mystical interfaith Catholic priest. Uh, and finally Paul Tillich. I would put Paul Tillich in that category. He's not strictly considered a mystic, but his esoteric expression of biblical study is very mystical in its own right. Carlton Pearson is a modern, a postmodern mystic, Christian mystic. Alright, in Islam, we have Sufism. So mysticism in Christianity, in Islam, it would be considered Sufism or Sufism. We have uh, characters like Rumi. One of my favorite quotes of Rumi, he says, he says, beyond the arguments of right and wrong, woo, there is a field. I'll meet you there. Just let that, let that sit in your spirit for a minute. Beyond the arguments of right and wrong, there is a field, a space, a sanctuary. I'll meet you there. That's an Islamic Sufi named Rumi. Ibn Arabi, I think I'm saying that Arabi, the, the rolling of the R. Another uh, beautiful Islamic Sufi mystic, mystic. Um, alright, uh, Jewish mysticism uh, would be called Kabbalah or Kabbalah. Isaac the Blind, uh, the rabbi's Israel Ben Eli Azar, Nachman or Noshman. The embodiment of divinity, not thinking born in sin, shaped in iniquity, but kind of getting into that mystical connection with the divine. I am that which thou art kind of idea. I am the thing that God created. I am like God. So we find them, uh, we find those mystics and those are just a few names. Go on ChatGPT or Copilot or whatever your thing is. And just, just put in there uh, interfaith Abrahamic mystics and see what comes up. It will, it will bless your socks off. Alright, pages one oh six and one oh seven in Carlton Pearson's The Gospel of Inclusion. Romans chapter eight and verse twenty-eight uh, says, all things work together for good to those who love God and to those who are called, King James the Called according to God's purpose or purposes. The English word God is derived from the English concept of good. God, think about this, God, good, devil, evil. There's just, there's just one letter added or taken away in both of, in both of those constructs. God, G-O-D, good, G-O-O-D. Devil, D-E-V-I-L, evil, E-V-I-L. Is that, is that coincidence? Just, just think that through on, on a literary um, kind of basis of that most, most books that we read that are religious sacred texts are not really literal books. They're literary works of genius, helping us to understand the bigness of God. Uh, the concept of good and vice versa. Who doesn't love what is good? Who doesn't love what is good? Uh the concepts of good and vice versa, who doesn't love what is good? Who doesn't love what is good? But God, uh but good, like beauty, is in the eye of the beholder. Alright, so. Admit right now that what you think is beautiful is is given to you by some filter of what you were told is beautiful. Skin color, the size of a person's lips, um the the way they dress, the the shape of their body. Um I mean e- even, we can even see a vast array of of a pendulum swing. In the American culture of what is beautiful. In in Marilyn Monroe's Day and Age, a more full-bodied kind of voluptuous woman was. Uh was kind of the thing. And then coming into like the late seventies, early eighties, it was kind of this gaunt, very thin look. Late nineties, we were reintroduced to people like Je- Jennifer Lopez and. Uh Beyonce, back to a more full-bodied type woman was considered beautiful again. What is beautiful? What is beautiful is what you are conditioned to believe is beautiful. What is your proclivity and just, just asking you tonight to be aware? Whether that's beautiful of of a human body, okay? Or something that's, even watch this, the 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 kind of totally in shape body of a man who. Is so thin, you can see every vein in his body, every striash- striation of his muscles, very much part of a a fad. And now you can see, it's almost like in in women who are trying to find a man. Uh or a mate or whatever, whatever your orientation is, everybody's welcome here. But they're like, ooh, somebody who's that much in shape might be a narcissist. They're just in the mirror all the time, they don't know how to let their hair down and have a little fun or live or, I wanna be with somebody who's healthy, but. Maybe not that health conscious, cuz that, that might mean they never, they've not eaten a Reese's Pieces in a while. Yeah, so yeah, e- even the ideas of what we all want in 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 a partner uh might change with experience. Everyone residing on earth loves their idea of what is good or what good is. Meaning that everybody loves their idea of what God is. What is our cultural understandings of good? And how does that shape our ideas of what God is? The human psyche struggles with loving God because our mind perceives God and good differently. From the way our spirit perceives them. Hmm, the mind, so let's talk about the mind, experience, conditioning, education. Exposure, uh something of of a provincial, what is that, what does provincial mean? Your kind of province? Your local area of what the mind says is good. Uh think about the clash of culture when Europeans were trying to colonize. The native indigenous in in what we call America now. And what they thought was good was clashing with what Europeans thought was good. The idea of modesty, covering the body. Uh was very different than what native indigenous indigenous people thought was good or beautiful. And so, yeah, what what are these cultural clashes, which is right, which is wrong? Are we aware that there's probably not a right or wrong, just a, something that we prefer, preferences? Yeah. And how does that, how do we apply that framework to our theology? What do we, what we think is good as being raised in American culture or African culture or. Latin culture or Asian culture or ancient Near East culture or um um Middle Eastern culture? What we think is good might be what we were raised to be taught as is good. And then we project that onto God. My idea of good must be the idea of God. We're taught in, uh sorry, let's um, don't wanna get past that. We originated. In God and came forth out of divinity. When God saves us, he, she, it saves that which is part of himself. As a father would uh would do anything, even give up his life to save his child. We are taught in Christian theology that God gave up the life of his son in order to conquer uh conquer it. For the rest of his children. I was sitting with Bishop Pearson in in our house one Sunday afternoon, he had preached for us that Sunday, he and I were. Probably napping in and out of talking and looking at each other, you sleep? Uh on, on a couch that Brandy and I've had for probably almost thirty years now, um for twenty years. And Carlton would be, just be have his feet up, shoes off, arms folded with his glasses off and nodding off. And he would wake up and say, Donaldson, have you ever thought about the idea of salvation? My kids were little and they were kind of walking upstairs and he said, don't you think about Esther and Micah? He said, if. If Esther send, send against you. Would you kill Micah to redeem Esther? And you know, of course, as a younger father at that point. That was just horrid for me to think about that, why would I, why would I need to kill Micah to redeem Esther? And he looked at me and he said, well, that's what you believe. You believe because of the first Adam's sin. The second Adam must be killed to redeem the first Adam. He didn't have to say anything else to me, I said, I get it. That was so clear, that was so revelatory and so clear. But that, those are, those are kind of the exposures that we have to goodness, God's goodness, God must kill. You know, the the second Christ to redeem the first Christ, Adam in some ways. The second Adam must die to redeem the first Adam. Are, is this our concept of good? And then we begin to ascribe that onto a God. That must, in God's goodness, because we think it's good, because we've been taught that. God must crucify something, punish something, there must be a substitutionary atonement. In order to redeem the first child. Wow, what what have we thought is good? Yeah, so I'm gonna give you a little trigger warning here. Uh this is a, Carlton delves into some talk about slavery right here, that's kind of, can be a little painful, but. Just gonna get your mind ready for it. Uh Carlton says, to slave owners, slavery seemed good. Even scriptural, I've even heard. Uh black pulpits. Talk about slavery was God's gift to get Africans out of their African spirituality and voodoo and whatever. Into an Americanized Christianity in Jesus. We forget that the E- Ethiopian Christianity was one of the earliest forms of Christianity, so. Christ and even Christianity in some, some context has been in Africa for a very, very long time. It wasn't necessarily taken there, remember the Middle East, okay, Jerusalem. Is just really a little, little piece of an ocean across from Egypt, which is 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 North Africa, so. Just consider that as we begin to talk about um that we, we had to take Christianity to Africa, there were some expressions of it already there, but. Uh to slave owners, slavery seemed good, even scriptural, their justification was, here it is. These heathen pagan slaves are better off with us, they're oppressors. Than they would be back in Africa with their uncivilized ways and backward forms of worship. Some slaveholders actually thought they were saving their slaves from hell. In the next life while ironically subjecting them to hell or to it in this life. Interesting, isn't it? Christianity does uh does the same thing today in trying to save people in third world countries. I believe most missionaries are sincere, I would agree with that, but their perceptions are mistaken. Alright, so the heart to want to help is beautiful. The heart to want to project your God onto other countries is hurtful and harmful. I believe most missionaries are are, their perceptions are mistaken. The most uncivilized native in the deepest jungle of the Amazon is no more or less. Far from the Father's grace than the most devoted uh devoted born again Christian in America. Hmm, the Apostle Paul said this at the, the Areopagus. Uh or the philosophers in Athens or of what's commonly called Mars Hill. He said, God is not far from any of us. E- even your own poets have said, we are God's offspring. And that's when Paul said, in God we live, we move, we have our being, yeah. Uh alright, um phys- uh physics tells us that in uh that in an infinite universe, any single point is just as far. From the outer edge of the universe as any other point. Have you, just think about that for a minute. Where are we in the universe and how do we measure where we are to the edge? What is the edge? So if you, if you've taken geometry, when you look at a, a sphere or a circle. You can kind of measure its diameter and what's called the radius. So I think the radius is, is it pi R squared, Brandy, or pi D squared?
Why do you, how do you, and why do you know?
Because I'm, I'm brilliant.
Well, I'm the, I'm the math.
So you can measure the the diameter of a circle, I forget the, the combination of that. Something deep, but then you can also measure the radius, which is if you go from the outer edge to the very center.
I'm so impressed, okay. So let me back up.
Say, just testify.
I'm gonna testify. So I am, I was a math major. And I get like one hundreds in calculus, now this is. This is thirty years ago, but I was a math major. If my life depended on it, I don't think I could have given you that formula just now, like I took advanced calculus.
I did not.
Got it, right?
Did I really?
I mean, basically, it's, it's close, but it is D equals two R.
Two R.
So two times R is what that means. But you, you said R squared, so. I mean, I'm very impressed.
Sugar mama, chicken wings on you.
Is there? Is there anybody else on tonight who would have known the formula for the diameter of a circle?
I would say if Lydia Hayes is watching because she's a young teacher, she might.
Alright, continue your teaching.
Alright, that was, that was a good interruption. Alright, so um so think about how we say things like. Up and down, north and south, a- according to whom? I mean, Australia is, I come from a land down under, any white folks tonight? Yep, I come from a land down under what? China's under there, Hawaii's over there, West, these are all just made up things. Because we're talking about some sort of axis. So the earth kind of spins on a little bit of a, a tilted axis. And so we take like Antarctica and the north and south poles or polarities and say, well. I'm gonna say this is north. And that's south, and we're gonna judge, we're gonna decide this is a south pole or a north pole, why? Who, why, how do you know that what you say is north is really south? And so in that way, how do we measure this idea of who's closest to the center of the universe or? Now you may be in in closer to the center of your galaxy or your solar system or some sense of orbital reality. But that's such a small and minute idea when it comes to the universe of billions of Milky Way type galaxies. So what is right, what is wrong, what is good, what is bad, what's up, what is down? And I'm not, not trying to be a reductionist or a relativist. But in some ways, what we perceive as. You know, objectivity really is subjective. So when you say that someone is closer to God than someone else. By what, what rubric are you using? What, what litmus test are we applying here to say? That this civil civilized world, by the way, what is civilized? If you, if if you want some challenge to what we think civilized is, watch the movie Avatar. Not the second one, not The Way of Water, which I like it too, but nothing could be as good as the original Avatar. The whole movie Avatar is asking us to re- rethink what we think civilized is, is civilized stealing. Minerals from the ground, taking oil out of the ground. Robbing it of its natural resources, taking other countries' resources. Is that really what si- is capital, is capitalism really civilization? Just think about it for a moment, I'm not trying to squelch ingenuity and creativity and progress, I'm all about it. But what do we call civilized? Or is it learning to live at one with nature? Yeah, so think about when we say that somebody in the Amazon River Basin. Is uncivilized because they worship the sun. Or they connect to God through the what, the river? The river becomes divine in some ways, and so not just, um what's the word I'm looking for, a pantheism, but pantheism. So pantheism, you, if some of you scholars out there helped me with this, but pantheism is kind of seeing God. Um that God is nature. But pantheism is recognizing the God that is in all of na- all natural things. And I could have those backwards, so forgive me, but do your own research, that's, I can only remember so many things, people, amen, somebody. But what is, what really is uncivilized about honoring the divinity in an animal that you eat? In in the movie Avatar, when uh one of the characters would shoot an animal to eat. They would go over and immediately tell the animal, thank you, thank you for your life, thank you for blessing me. My family will watch me tonight, I'll I'll probably only eat five chicken wings or so, but there will not be one piece of anything left on the bone of that chicken. I will not even leave the gristle almost, why? Because first of all, I have an issue of, I don't wanna waste food, but secondly. I'm kind of Bud- Buddhist at heart, I'm saying to that chicken, thank you. Thank you for for sustaining my life with your life. Um and so who's civilized, who's uncivilized? Um you know, seeing the movie Dances with Wolves, by the way. Brandy's gonna forgive me for saying this, but um we, she and I love the movie Dances with Wolves, it's a long movie, but it's just, I could watch it once a week. So Kevin Costner's character falls in love with this woman. Who was taken in in some ways by an Indian tribe. A native indigenous tribe, and she learns their language, but she also remembers her English language and anyway, so they start dating. And her na- her tribal name is Stans with a Fist, and she kind of had like wild hair, she's like. Like permed hair or kind of curly, so sometimes.
Were gonna tell.
It's a sweet story, it is a sweet story, so because Brandy is native, she has native indigenous blood. Any morning that she wakes up and her hair is kind of crazy, I call her Stans with a Fist. And she looks at me like, really? Like, it's a compliment, Stans with a Fist is a beautiful woman. I like crazy hair, I'm all about Amazonian.
My hair is not crazy today, it's perfect.
It's very, it's very white and then completely ironed, perf- it's perfection, yeah. But sometimes we have Stans with a Fist hair, what hair is more civilized? Is it, is it the perfectly coiffured hair, is it the the natural look? It's all in the eye of the beholder, isn't it? Yeah, and so God, good, civilization, uncivilized. What is the right religion? Think about, so let me do this, I'm I'm, I'll do this quickly. So everybody, big deep breath, cuz you're gonna, I'm I'm gonna call upon your your higher self to hear me say this. I've done some study recently in in the presence of homophobia. In in some historic black churches and pulpits. And kind of the reluctance to say, well, civil rights is the same thing as human rights and. If Dr. King were still alive, he would be advocating for same gender loving couples and in our queer siblings. Um that's a difficult conversation because there's a hesitancy sometimes in some of the historic black churches, I don't wanna create it as a monolith. It is all diverse. To embrace our queer siblings. Well, why? S- some of that, not all of it, but charitably, and I don't, I never want to justify homophobia, I think you guys know. I'm a lifetime ally, that's who I am, I've given my life for it. But think about the the late fifties and early sixties. And the nuclear African American families desire. To assimilate into white culture to be considered a man, a woman, to have a right to vote. Uh to have a right to eat at any, any restaurant or or business establishment. Um this was kind of the 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 civil rights struggle, if you look at even the way Martin King dressed. He had contact with even Malcolm X, look at the way Malcolm X dressed, he wasn't traditionally. In a kufi or in an Islamic, he was kind of dressing in some sense like white people. Um some of that was a cultural survival tactic. Of doing what? We are trying to fit in with European sensibilities to be considered a man, a woman, a full human being. Okay, this is coming out of slavery into reconstruction. And so in that framework. Some of, some of the African sensibility began to adopt this kind of white puritanical. Uh sexuality. That sex was a very specific thing, but that's not really what African sexuality was. That was ro- that was something that was robbed of African peoples in the transatlantic, uh transatlantic slave trade. And then the desire to survive under Jim Crow and uh you know, separate but equal. All this is happening in this time, and so. Charitably, if we're going to heal, listen to me, listen to me, architects, if we're going to heal. Look, the white church is just as homophobic. Look, the white church is just as homophobic as the black church, I get it, but the white church is replete with privilege and and not experienced oppression. Quite as much, not nearly as much as a black church, and so we we find it hypocritical to say. How is it that you want justice for the black family, but not for your black queer siblings? These things don't, don't, they're not reconcilable. Well, when we look at it from an architectural perspective. We begin to recognize historically. The black family trying to survive in a Eurocentric, in Eurocentric sensibilities. And so anything that was overly sexualized or anything that was gray or nuanced as in. Uh, uh, bisexuality or homosexuality. That that's not gonna help us survive in a white um, um, puritanical pilgrimage type thinking. And so just just hear me, and I wanted to give that as kind of just your. Just your spiritual vitamin to chew on that a little bit tonight, if we're going to heal it, we have to understand. Um, and so we can't condemn it before we are charitable towards it, and we can heal it. But it's gonna take a little bit of work uh, in the mind, so. How how do we understand our our measurements, how do we measure good, bad, right, wrong, acceptable, unacceptable? Where are we in the universe, what's up, what's down, what's out there, what's in there, what's over there, what's? The universe as far as we know it from a a physics standpoint or astrophysics, that is still, it's still expanding. Think about that, uh, the idea that the universe is still expanding, alright, look at the, look at the last um. Paragraph, salvation is not a matter of a matter of religious mechanics. It is spiritual and even mystical, we must move beyond the superficial and superstitious as we ponder God's nature. Jesus described the mystery of being born again like this, here it is. Here is the Jesus, at least a Jesus talking point. About salvation, Nicodemus, you must be born again. What does it mean to be born again, and he described it right here. You should not be surprised at my saying, you must be born again. Keep coming, what's the context, not go to an altar, not confess me as Lord and Savior. That's John's Gospel, the synoptics had nothing to do with it. Matthew, Mark and Luke had no concept of confess Jesus as your Lord and Savior, worship Jesus as God. Their concept does, think again, repent, change the way you think, there's a kingdom that's coming. You're not gonna be ready for it if you don't learn how to repent and think differently. Okay, so. So hear me, so this sneaks its way into the Gospel of John. I love that, that e- even in the Gospel of John, which is not, certainly not my favorite gospel. We still get some very esoteric understandings of this Jesus mindset. Here's, here's what salvation is, here's what being born again is to Jesus. The wind blows wherever it pleases. You hear its sound, but you cannot tell where it comes from or where it's going. So it is with everyone who is born again. Contextually, born of the spirit, John three, seven and eight. So again, we are, we are embarking on a diversity. Of soteriology, what is, that's just a fancy way of saying, there's more than one salvation taught in the gospels. There's more than one, it's not just believe, you know, believe in your heart, confess with your mouth, John ten, nine and ten. Uh, for God so loved the world, John three sixteen, uh, that whosoever believes in him shall have eternal life. There's more than just that. Here we have even in the Gospel of John, which is pretty much saying you gotta believe and confess. We have this beautiful little moment of Jesus saying, if you wanna be born again, you've gotta be like the wind. You can't be so rigid, you've gotta allow the spirit to have its way with you. That is some good stuff right there, my people. I need to write that down and remember that in my little, little, little mental file of the diversity of soteriology. Okay, uh, we're gonna jump into our discussion on tonight. Uh, prompt one, do our subjective experiential cultural ideas of good and civilization determine our definitions of God? Number two, are some people closer to God than others, what does that mean? Three, are rigidity and certainty obstacles to being born again? Talk to me, everybody.
Alrighty, well, before we jump into questions, uh, first of all, everyone's kinda quiet tonight, there's ton of you on, so jump in the chat. Uh, questions, if you need to see them again, are in your, in the chat, excuse me, they're in the chat for you. Um, but let's see here, I wanted to give a quick little shout out to Sue Manon. Uh, you were talking about one of your books earlier, I mean, it might have been the devotional, but Sue said, I just got my copy yesterday, so. Joining us on the book journey and. Uh, Sue, let us know where you're joining from.
Don't wanna get up all in your business, Sue, but um. If you are ever in the ATL, if you're ever in Atlanta, we're literally ten minutes south of the heart of Atlanta and Decatur. Um, bring your book with you, I'd be glad to sign it for you, li- li- look forward to getting to know you better.
Alright, and then Andy Allison, our friend is on. Earlier you were talking, I think it was during the devotion, um. It said, we play all the roles. Or we play, we all play roles, I'm sorry, we all play roles, it feels good to have a role that fits the real us.
Yeah, uh, maybe in the in the conversation of architecting inclusion, Reverend. Give Becky our love, we miss, miss you guys, love you guys so much. Yeah, what what we do to architect spaces, public spaces at times. May be a an expression of a role that we play, and then we may also have a different space that we inhabit. With a close trusted confidant, where questions of our own journey are a little bit more permissible. And and celebrated, and even if the question isn't answered, there's still a kind of a cathartic moment of. I've just always wondered about this, but I don't know if I can present this to everybody. Uh, I think we share some of that space with each other, thanks, Reverend.
Also, you were sharing and he said, I'm with Origin.
Yeah, allegorical readings, uh, I think that was Reverend, I think that was Origins love for the scriptures. He was such a, he was such a biblical student. That his reading of some of the Old Testament was very troublesome to him. Um, his, even some of the, the counter testimony that he encountered in the, in the, what we would call the New Testament. Uh, really troubled him as a, as a scholar. And his, his methodology of not throwing it out was to say. Maybe we honor the scripture by reading it more allegorical than literal. And of course, some. Later didn't like that, uh, Saint Augustine of Hippo did not like that. John Calvin did not like that. Um, but Gregory of Nisa would have liked that, uh, Marcian certainly would have liked that, he was considered a heretic as well. Uh, Clement of Alexandria would have liked that reading, Saint Jerome, uh, would have loved that. Um, Pantanus, who was Clement's uh, spiritual father in some ways would have loved it, and so. Yeah, what what a diversity in our Christian history.
Alright, and Sue says, oh, uh, family here, from Saint Pete in First Unity.
We'll give the, I I call John Scott the Reverend Guru Bodhisattva, the Reverend Guru Bod- Bodhisattva. He is my, that's family forever, thanks Sue for being with us.
Alright, and um, let's see here, let me jump in. Number one, uh, do our subjective ex- experiential cultural ideas of good and civilization determine our definitions of God? Lulu shared, I feel like this is that moment when the ego decides that it is separate from the divine. And then creates a god in its own image.
Yeah, the, the Lulu, the the egoic god of our understanding. And, you know, let's, let's be somewhat. Compassionate or empathetic toward that. That phrase, the god of our understanding, because that's kind of all we have sometimes. But then an awareness that that's not everyone's understanding. Yeah, it's okay to have our understanding, but maybe not always impose that. Upon others because their understanding might subvert, it might challenge our understanding in some ways, right? And so, I I I've learned this more recently, uh, Lulu, that um, the canon of scripture. Doesn't really mean that that's all God has ever said. It just means that the word canon in the Greek just means a measurement. It's not a specific, it's just. This is a measurement, and so we're not saying that Paul had it all right, that Peter or. Uh, even Jesus had all of it exactly right. They were speaking in the context of their day and through their own lenses and through their own conditionings. And we use their canon as a measurement. This this canon of these included books as a measurement to say, what is Holy Spirit saying now? And as I think we said this, um. I think I said it on Sunday, um, but. Uh, Karl Bart, the the S- the Swiss theologian of the seventeenth and eighteenth century. Said, our job is not only to know what the apostles and prophets said. But what must we say about what they said? So even Karl Bart, considered one of the greatest theologians of somewhat of the modern era, would would have said. Hey, it's not just that we need to know what the apostles and prophets said. But what must we say about what they said, how do we rightly divide what they said, and so we can be both empathetic, compassionate, charitable. Toward others with different ideologies. And charitable toward ourselves, that we we do have a god of our own understanding. But we want the Holy Spirit to continually challenge that understanding, we want the wind. To blow us in different spaces because we are truly born again, thanks, Lulu.
Alright, I'm looking to see if anyone else jumped in for number one, and uh, Reverend John Scott himself has joined.
Just, oh, just what you mean, Reverend. Get somewhere and set out, son, get up off that stove and do something another with your life. Good to see you, buddy, love you.
And um, okay, I have to, let me back up really good, okay, Henry Harris is on and gave a answer.
Sent me an encouraging text today. Right back at you, sir, keep, keep on keeping on, you've been a preaching machine recently, just all over the world preaching.
And I thought he he um, posted a serious comment, but now that I read it. I'll come back to you and deal with you in a moment. But um, Apostle Newbed is on. Everyone, great family, joining from Florida.
Jordan from Florida, I think Orlando area, but ha- hails from uh, Nigeria. Apostle Newbed, what a brilliant thinker you are, so good to see your name, sir, honor you.
Just had to give some of these shouts out, and there's lots of other people up in the chat as well, love you guys, but jump in for the questions, um, if you want to. Alright, so for number two, Lulu shared, we are connected. And ex- oh, well, excuse me, the 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 question for number two was, are some people closer to God than others? And Lulu shared, we are connected and extensions of the source of all there is, we are all equal, our awareness can vary.
Yeah, um, and and good, Lulu, yeah, our awareness varies. So what is the awareness of our closeness to God? Maybe that's even a a better qualifier to this question, right, so are some people closer to God than others? Are are some people more aware of their closeness to God, so let's revisit. The Apostle Paul's. Kind of talk at Mars Hill in front of the Greek, uh, the Grecian philosophers. When he doesn't say that they're not close to God. He kinda challenges their methodologies, he says, look. God's not an idol, God's not a piece of wood or a piece of gold, it's not something fashioned. Uh, but then he says, but you guys are closer than you think because. You know, I read your poet said, when I was coming in the city, I read your poets have said, we are his offspring. In him, in him, we live, move and have our, our being, beings. But Paul is somewhat, somewhat um, respectful of what he's saying to them because he says, look. He says, Christ in you. That thing working in you that you may call different things. Is already, it's already occupying space within you, and so let me just, let me just preach this for a second, hang on with me, people. Paul did not go to Mars Hill to preach Christ to the Grecians. He went to preach to the Christ that was in the Grecians. And that can be called many different things, it can be called the Christ, the Krishna, the Atman, the awakening, the higher self, the. The awareness, the con- the space of consciousness, um, that field, that vibration, that can enter, that connecting point, and so. Uh, in 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 the answering of this question, I would jump in with a little bit of an answer and say, no one is closer to God than anyone else. People might just be aware, more aware of their closeness with God, really beautiful, thanks.
Alright, and here we we come back to um, Henry Harris. Who said, I can't speak for everyone else, but I know with me being chief apostle, I am closer to God than anyone.
Amen, brother, yes, the the chief among the apostles. If you don't know Brother Henry Harris. That is, that is his satirical uh, sense of humor at work there, thank, thanks for making us.
And I'm giving you a side eye, friend, side eye. Um, what is it gonna be like when we finally get to meet Henry Harris, how funny?
Joy and laughter.
Alright, let's see here, and then, uh, now, hey, listen, we're, Dee and I are got one foot out the door.
I'm hungry, I'm hangry. About twelve thirty today.
Yeah, we're ready to, um, we're ready to go get our chicken wings, so if you wanna jump in the chat, feel free to. Uh, let's see here. For number three, are rigidity and certainty obstacles to being born again, Lulu shared, yes, the process of being born again is a continual work. Living and breathing and shifting.
A continual work, how about that, so let's, let's talk about the diversities of soteriology. Before the foundation of the world, I was saved, okay? Uh, if you need something more than that, we were predestined, some of this is Calvinistic thought, but predestined for good works. Okay, so, yeah, you, you didn't get saved, you just realized you had already been saved with the foundation. When you awaken to the truth that you have been saved. Again, we don't believe anyone has ever been unsaved, this is just Christian, Christian talking points. You wake up to the fact that your belief, your faith, your understanding of. Your awareness of salvation is another salvation point. But then that that we are walking out and working out, and maybe as Carlton Pearson would say, waking. Into our salvation, so what does that mean? I was saved, I am saved, I'm being saved. And so instead of a sou- instead of a soteriological linear approach. We begin to approach from a continuum. Uh, a cyclical approach that salvation is happening all the time. Isn't that what Jesus said here? You're being born again all the time, so. The David, I counted all lost, the Apostle Paul, I counted rubbish that I might gain the Christ. I it, I come now and not as an expert, but as the least of these a- among you. Not that I have apprehended, but I press toward the mark. There is this beginner's mind, this, this Zimbardo space, this liminal uh, transitional space where we begin to realize. I'm being saved every day. There's a new manna, a new, a a living word, a living will, a bread from heaven, every day of your life, and it only requires. For you to eat it. Eat the question every day of your life, eat the what is it, eat the whiteness of God, and in that way, watch this. We are being born again every moment of surrender that we say, God have your way. Holy Ghost, Spirit, truth, vibration, frequency, mind of the universe, have your way, I'm being born again every. Second of my, of my life, that's what we might call the Christ conscious mind or the awareness of the self, thanks.
Reverend Scott said, uh, born again, reincarnated.
Reincarnate, as in, we can approach that Reverend Scott, you and I've talked about this, as in transmigration? Actually, the reincarnation of of physicality. Or, ooh, reincarnative spirit, reincarnative spiritual awakenings that we are always being born again.
John also said, you're my favorite modern day biblical scholar and teacher, I respect you, honor you, and I'm grateful for you. He said, I'm the right rep, right irreverent Rev though.
The right irreverent guru.
He said, he said, go eat, which I think we're gonna go do, so. Everyone's so not super talkative tonight, so um, that's alright, there's a lot of you on, we love you guys, but we'll call.
Only Brandy can see that my eyes are a little glassy. Because I I have so much love for John Scott, anytime he's sweet to me, it makes me emotional, but. Love you, sir, look forward to seeing you, seeing you very, very soon, give all, all of our love to our First Unity. Brethren and sisterin, uh, thanks, guys, for joining us tonight.
Jumped in, Dolores line said.
Oh, really, from Michigan?
Yeah, we're there to get them saved before they passed away. Referring to before. Maybe, maybe Saint, I don't know if you're saying we're, we were there. Sorry, Dolores, maybe give me a little bit more context, but.
Dolores, we love you, give Curtis our love as well, I hope it's. Not, not too, too cold yet in Michigan, I'm sure it's colder than in the ATL. Uh, I did want to encourage everyone that can. Uh, to worship with us in person. Uh, to worship with us in person on Sunday morning, I don't do that often because I think your. Your spiritual practice is your own, we try to encourage everybody the third Sunday, which is our fellowship Sunday, our food Sunday. Uh, potluck, potluck Sunday, to come out and, um. See, see your people once a month, but if not, if you're, if you are more comfortable worshiping at home. I get it, uh, your spiritual practice is your own. But there are also moments that we do need you to come in person, especially. As one of the motherships of inclusive architecture that we are able to show, uh, other ministers that this is sustainable. We, we can, we can realize and maintain, uh, homeostasis and solvency. And not have to have hell and heaven and. Good and bad and evil and Muslim and saving the world and missionizing, all those don't have to be. Uh, incentivizing points of architecture, we can sustain spiritual community and connectivity. Without these, these kind of lower ideas of getting people saved, saving them from hell or. Common enemies or all that is just lower thinking, okay, but. On certain days, we need people like Reverend Christian Smith, like. Ex pa- ex evangelical pastor Brian Recker, who's with us this Sunday, to see that we, we, you can sustain this. There are people who think like us, and that will, that will contribute both with their time, their talent and their treasure. And so come out Sunday, bring your time with you, bring your talent with you, bring your treasure with you. And let's support, uh, one of our own tribe's people. Brian Recker, ex, ex evangelical pastor. Who is gonna really bless us with a deconstructing, a deconstructive teaching on hell. Uh, and his, and his New York Times bestseller, Hell Bent. Uh, so come out in person if you can, we'd love to see you, uh, at Spiritual Truth Sanctuary on Sunday morning.
Dolores did come back and say, I think there may have been a message I missed, Dolores, so sorry about that, um, but.
Forgive us.
Yeah, forgive us, and, uh, Lulu said, I wish there was an offshoot of Spirit and Truth Sanctuary in Northern Cal. I wish there was too, cause we'd come visit you there.
We need to go to California.
We've done one of our, you know, eve- like, when you went to New York that time and you were able to get together. So you just never know, we might come see you, Lulu, um, but we, we love you guys.
Brandy and I have some sky miles, I'll tell you that, we got some sky miles we could use and a buddy pass, so. You might see us one day, Lulu, we also have, uh, a friend in Hercules, California, which I think is maybe closer to. Isn't that closer to San Francisco? I think it is, yeah. Anyway, love you guys, um, thanks for tonight, if you have a chance to support Spirit and Truth, we encourage you to do that, uh, if you've received some good from us. Give some good in return. Alright, hopefully, hopefully to see you guys in person if possible. On Sunday, if not, um, go out on, uh, on to look for Brian Recker, R E C K E R. Brian Recker, he's on all the different social media outlets and buy his book, support his book, Hell, Hell Bent is the name of his book. Um, and so.
We'll share that on Sunday as well.
We'll share that on Sunday, but if you can't be in person to buy a book, at least. At least virtually go out, I don't know if his books are, I'm sure it's different places you can buy it, but. We want to support our tribe's people who are speaking truth to power, he is, I think, three hundred thousand. Um, at, at least just Instagram followers, that's not talking about Facebook and, and, and other outlets. And so he is a voice of postmodern, uh, reformation in the spirit of Carlton D Pearson and Bishop John. Shelby Spawn, uh, and so encourage you to, uh, come out and support Brian.
Two quick last comments to round us out, Donald Robinson is on, said, I love your ministry. I must make it a point to visit Reverend Donald Robinson from Illinois, and I, I put in the chat, uh, Reverend Robinson. That if you do, uh, make sure that you let us know in advance, so always send us a note so we know to be on the lookout for you. But we would love to have an opportunity for you to visit us.
And do your best, Re- Reverend Robinson, do your best to come, come on a third Sunday to Spirit and Truth because. Then you'll get the whole experience of fellowship and get to meet all of our tribe's people and eat with us afterwards and. Maybe laugh and dance, we'll get, maybe you and I get to sit at the table and talk for a minute, but we'd lo- love to see you.
And, um, and Apostle Newbed said, my people are moving away from the idea. Excuse me, let me find it, the idea of getting people saved, the reformation is doing amazingly well. Isn't that encouraging?
Apostle, I would, I would, um, second that, thank you, I, of course, I. About once a month, uh, Reverend John Scott and I have, uh, a conversation with Ron Tiede Bensonita Hosa. And area are kind of coming into curiosity and what is, what is this God thing that we've. Appropriated for all these years, and so there is a, a, the beginnings of a move. Of reconsidering the bigness of God in Abuja, Nigeria, and I know that's close to your heart, and so. You're one of those voices, you're one of those apostles, and so thank you, thank you for being here.
We love you.
We love you guys, we'll see you, I guess, Friday morning at seven AM for our devotion, go in peace.